The Notaway County Board of Supervisors now come to order. This is a joint session with the Planning Commission. And we welcome you here, but we want you to know that this is a work session. And we are going to hear from Mr. John Anzavino, as well as Mrs. Susan Seward. And she's from the Rural Solar Development Coalition on the county's draft proposal, proposed solar energy ordinance for our guests. Please keep in mind that this is a work session and not a public hearing. Questions will only be entertained by the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Mr. Perry, will you bring your committee into?
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the Planning Commission to order. Senator, I want to thank all for coming out. And I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Ben Perry.
Here.
Harvey Wolfers.
Present.
Shandra Clarence Allen.
You're here.
Steve Bowen.
Jim Bruce.
Here.
Paul Carter.
Bill Gunn.
Hugh Jones.
Here.
Sandra Lewis.
Jack Lavelle.
Here.
Jack Leslie.
Frankie Williamson.
Here.
We do have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Bowen is not here tonight. Mr. Bowen has death in his family. And while I'm announcing that, one of our former members of the Board of Supervisors, Otha Freya, has also passed and will be funeralized at 11 o'clock Saturday at Crenshaw Methodist Church. Mr. Perry, will you give us the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Father God in heaven, let us again that we come in the name of Jesus. We come this evening, God, giving your name all praise, thanking you, God, for another opportunity to call on your holy and righteous name. God, we pray now that you would come and be one of our mix as the John Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors meet for a joint work session this evening. God, we ask a special blessing on each and everyone that's in attendance. And God, we ask a special blessing on our county leaders, our state leaders, and our national leaders, Lord. And God, remember our men and women that's serving in uniform all over the world. God, remember supervisor born this evening as he mourned for the death in his family. And not only him, God, but all the rest that's have death in their family. God, we pray that you would continue to watch over and guide them. Bless our guests this evening. Just bless everybody under the sound of my voice, words in the name of Jesus, and I pray. Amen.
Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, the agenda will be approved. Question. Those in favor, let it be known by the usual sign. Those opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now have the presentation. Our county assistant, Ms. Tomer, will you?
Mr. Costin's over. I'm diverting him in.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tomer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My opening comments will be very brief. A lot of work has gone into the development of this ordinance, members of the Planning Commission, by Mr. Anzavino, Ms. Seward. And it has also been molded by comments and opinions that have been received from various interested parties. And that is likely a process that will continue. I want to let folks know that as we have received comments in, we've shared them with the board and will continue to do so regardless of whether this moves to a public hearing in the near future or not through the zoning amendment process. So at this time, I'm just going to simply turn it over to Mr. John Anzavino, who's been working this issue pretty much since he associated, excuse me, associated with the county earlier this year. And we'll hear Mr. Anzavino's report.
A little awkward, so I'm going to turn this around a little bit so I can address the Planning Commission as well as the board. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
The board, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public and interested party. I am John Anzavino. I'm what's called a transition advisor to the county. I served as interim county administrator here for about four months, and my pleasure being able to stay and be asked to stay to help with a number of projects. One of the projects that we're working with is a solar energy ordinance, solar energy facilities ordinance, which needs to be updated. Before I do that, I do need to introduce somebody who is with me this evening, Susan Seward from the Rural Solar Coalition. Susan has been advising us from a policy standpoint, but she also brings a lot of practical experience to the process because she's also chairperson of the Sussex County Board of Supervisors. And Sussex is way ahead of a lot of counties in the Commonwealth in conjunction with solar work. Each of you should have received this evening at your place, or if you were a citizen coming in, you had access to the agenda, obviously, copy of the draft ordinance. And I would, you know, note that that is a draft. It's not yet gone to final form yet. It will not go to final form until the county has a public hearing. There is, in the draft presented this evening, both out at the table and at the Board of Supervisors, one correction about special exception versus conditional use. Conditional use is not something that Notaway County uses in their zoning ordinance. You use the special exception process. You also have a copy of a, well, it would be a PowerPoint presentation, but we don't have that capability here in Portland to use that. So you have a copy. And then you also have two letters, one from Dominion Energy and one from Solar UNESCO commenting on the draft as it generally exists. And Susan and I will both address those comments at the end of the presentation. So flipping over to the first page of the PowerPoint presentation. Now, why are we here today? Well, this meeting can be held on request of the Planning Commission with deference to the Board of Supervisors because this is an important ordinance for the county both now and in the future. Making a solar decision, citing of a facility is a significant decision, land use decision on the part of any community. And it also has significant revenue impacts, which will be discussed separately with the Board of Supervisors because that falls within their taxation authority. Tonight, we want to review the proposed changes to Notaway County's zoning ordinance, the change in solar energy facilities, and these are in reaction to state changes in state law. When solar facilities were originally being cited in the Commonwealth, it was pretty wide open. It was kind of like the Wild West. And we've got some really interesting looking facilities, and we've got some facilities that don't generate the revenue that benefit the community where they're cited. I know, I live in one of those communities, Middlesex County, over on the Rappahannock and on the bay. Our hoped up for outcome, and Ted mentioned this, we were hoping to have some concurrence this evening or some thought this evening that we could move forward to public hearing. If that's not the case, that's fine. And I think it's important that you be more deliberate in this meeting and that you be comfortable with the ordinance that you're going to adopt because this is something that you have to live with. Moving on to the next page. The focus on redeveloping Notaway's County renewable energy solar energy ordinance is working to take advantage of changes in state law. We have learned from and taken advantage of information from Susan, as well as from discussions with several South Side Virginia communities. Really, South Side Virginia seems to be the hub of large solar facilities because of the agricultural and forestry land, the open space that we have in this part of the state. And we want to find, we wanted to find out what other folks were doing, as well as what experiences they had as well. We want, we're working to better protect in the future county citizens, your natural resources and the environment, while encouraging new solar based facilities in Notaway County. And, you know, you only get one crack at the land, and if you mess it up, and you can look in several urban areas, you don't get a chance to take it back. And this is a long term investment by a company. When they come into a county, it's 30 to 40 years. So that land will look like that for 30 to 40 years, generate revenue for 30 to 40 years. So with the tools that you have available to you now, you want to get it as right as Now, the history and timeline on the next few pages, originally, this, the whole solar issue came to a dead stop in Notaway County. You have a solar ordinance. It's six pages long. There's a lot of general requirements in there, a lot of interpret, it's open to a lot of interpretation. And it did not take, it does not take advantage of the changes in state law that are now available or the experiences of other localities. But you came to a dead stop in December 2020 when you put a moratorium on the acceptance of applications and processing of applications. And you decided you needed to study the county's existing ordinance and what the county might want to consider doing better. The county's Planning Commission moved forward aggressively with that, with that dead stop in dealing with the issue. They appointed a Renewable Energy Subcommittee to study the current ordinance and identify any needed changes. They had their first meeting in the spring of 2021. And then I think everybody recalls that period from winter, spring to late fall, when Mr. Costin came on this year, when things kind of went into the rabbit hole and got very quiet here in the county. And it's because of staff turnover. You know, your former deputy county administrator was also your de facto planning director. When John was given responsibility of county administrator, he really couldn't move forward with doing a lot of other things. Plus, he decided to retire at the end of, at the end of May. So there was a lot of staff turnover, and I can certainly attest to the fact, as probably Ted can, that there's probably more work to do here than there are hours in the day. It's a busy place to be. You have a very small, but as I've said this 100 times, at least you've got a very dedicated staff, but still, there's not enough bodies to go around to really keep things moving forward aggressively. So as things began to wind down in my tenure as the interim administrator, knowing that we really needed to pick this up, we started to interact with the Renewable Energy Subcommittee to restart the study process. That was on August 5th of 2021. And we got our first meeting with Susan, which was very beneficial. From that, we began to develop a draft ordinance, the staff did. And on the week of December, October 11th of 2021, the redrafted zoning ordinance was provided to the county attorney and to the Adanus or the Rural Coalition in advance of the Subcommittee meeting for review and comment. Week of October 18th, we redrafted that ordinance concerning the solar requirements with county attorney's comments and with the Coalition's comments and review provided prior to providing it to the Subcommittee. We again met with the Subcommittee on October 26th, again with Susan, and we gained additional suggestions concerning increased setbacks, natural vegetative buffers, an addition of language pertaining to groundwater, traffic analysis, battery storage facilities discussed and suggested for the addition of the draft ordinance. Your current ordinance deals with solar generating, solar generating facility, solar panels. It deals with wind energy. The draft ordinance that you have before you deals with solar panels and something which is new on the, to solar energy, battery storage facilities. And as you generate solar energy, you've got to usually have to have someplace to store. Can't put it all on the grid at one time with all the other generating plants and things that are going on. So you have to have a storage facility. And battery storage facilities can be big. They can be, they're expensive to build, and they have some type of risk and danger because, you know, you're storing electricity. Think about your car battery, think about a golf cart battery, think about the battery in your phone. You know, there have been some problems with those batteries. They're becoming fewer and fewer. But when you concentrate them in a large area, you have to take into consideration what safety factors you need to put in place. So we've included battery energy storage facilities into this ordinance as well. We, based upon the comments that we received at the October 26th meeting, we redrafted the ordinance, sent it to the county administrator for review. He got it back to us real quick, went on to the county attorney for a final review. And then on November 16th, it was presented to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission, you know, had discussion about the draft ordinance and asked for the joint work session with the Board of Supervisors. And of course, we are where we are right now on December 9th, a joint work session. So I want to make the point that while we had a dead time in dealing with this issue, the county has moved expeditiously, prudently, and efficiently from August on, when the resources were available to the county to get this done. And from this point in time, it will be up to the policymaking bodies, the policy approval bodies to move it forward. Now, on the next slide, our key points of discussion this evening. As I noted, the current ordinance was adopted as a solar and wind regulatory device, and it was developed a number of years ago when we didn't have access to all of the tools that are now available to counties. I noted that we're draft, we've redrafted the ordinance to separate wind from solar. Your new planning director, which begins on January the 3rd, unless you want me to continue working on this, is going to be tasked probably with taking on the wind section if the board still wants to continue discussions about wind energy. I want to make it clear that what we're talking about tonight are land use decisions versus revenue decisions. We've drafted an ordinance for the camp, for the board's consideration in conjunction with what's called revenue shift. We also have to provide information to the board in conjunction with a separate vehicle that can be used in the Commonwealth, the current vehicle that you're using, which is called the Machinery and Tools Tax Program. And there are advantages and disadvantages to both, but you need to make a decision on one or the other. And there are a number of factors that go into that that are not subject to tonight's In conjunction with the comprehensive plan, Ted and I have had discussions about that. The county's been redrafting its comprehensive plan for several months, working with the CRC. And there needs to be reference to alternative or renewable energy types of activities as part of the comprehensive plan, and that has been mentioned to the staff. So that needs to be done, as well as there needs to be some minor adjustments to the remainder of the existing zoning ordinance to reference single family and small business use of solar as permitted use in those particular districts. I haven't had a chance to go back and look at the permitted uses. If they're there, that's fine. If not, they'll need to be added in just because they are exempted under the requirements of this ordinance from the major application processes. Okay, moving on to the next slide, two changes and provisions of the redraft of the ordinance. As I noted, this draft has been reviewed on two occasions by Susan Seward, by Ted, and by your county attorney. So we have vetted this ordinance as much as we can, and it's a good thing because once you put your eyes on paper, on a computer screen, and you keep looking at it, you tend to overlook things or things all kind of blend together. And we've all caught them, and that's been a very, I think, beneficial process. The proposed solar energy ordinance that you have, it is modeled after other ordinances which are more aggressive, and I define more aggressive as being more up to date, more and modern, in defining applicant requirements to mitigate impacts of solar facilities. We looked at Mecklenburg, we looked at Brunswick, we looked at Halifax, Sussex, and other South Side ordinances. I actually did a national search as well on ordinances, but we have to be careful of what we do outside of the Commonwealth's boundaries because we are a state which only has certain eligible requirements that we can impose. But we've modeled this ordinance after some of the bits and pieces of many of those ordinances, but mostly from as a base Halifax and Mecklenburg. As I noted, it expands the ordinance to include battery storage facilities and with large scale solar facility, facilities and their review more detailed and with more information required for the Planning Commission and the board's review. I would note that the same districts that you currently allow solar facilities in, you will be able, under the proposed ordinance, you'll be allowing solar and battery storage facilities in those zoning districts. That's your agricultural district, your A1 district, your conservation district, C1, your light industrial district, L1, and your general industrial district, G1. You currently allow those, the solar facilities in that district, you allow those facilities, the new facilities as defined in those districts as well. It still requires a large scale solar facility. We'll go into that definition in just a moment. And all battery storage facilities obtain a special exception permit, and that is required now for the solar facility. So there's no change there other than the definition of facilities. It expands definitions and regulatory tools as you pre-use the ordinance, look at it, you can see what's in there. I won't go into every detail because we've advanced the size of the ordinance, which may not always be better, but it's gone from six pages to about 16 to incorporate batteries as well as incorporate some of the other requirements. But it expands definitions, regulatory tools, and allows you to better regulate them. Does not change requirements for residential or single use solar collectors for businesses, I noted. You want to put solar panels on the roof of your house or out in your yard, have at it, but you do have to get a building permit, okay? You do have to get undoubtedly a zoning permit. It establishes a large scale solar facility as greater than four acres or in 200 plus kilowatt, kilowatt hours of generating capacity versus small scale, which is less than four acres and less than 200 kilowatt hours generate, generating capacity. And dependent upon small scale versus large scale, small scale go under a less intense review because they're smaller facilities. They have less impact on the county. But they still have to submit some basic things, which we'll go into, that are required for the large scale facilities, but not everything. It does establish a distance from town boundaries where solar facilities and battery storage facilities are limited in their sighting, and that is a mile from any town boundary. And that is, that was recommended because there may be boundary adjustments. And boundary adjustments typically take place by towns for the purpose of growth, either economic growth or residential growth. And if you jam up your land adjoining the towns with solar facilities, you don't have any room for that growth. So that mile boundary around the towns is recommended for consideration by both the Planning Commission and the, and board. Next page. It reduces the density of facilities, and there are some question about this, and we'll be talking about this in a few minutes, but no more than two, two and a half percent of the land in a five mile radius of the project area of any existing large scale solar facility shall be approved for use as the project area for another new large scale solar energy facility. And that's because you don't want to have a solar facility on top of solar facility on top of solar facility. There is, there has been some comment by a couple of the interested parties on that, and we'll address that, as I said, in a few minutes. It includes language for third party review fees. You know, the county has limited staff. Getting one of these applications is, in reviewing it, it's a complex task. It's not easy. And no one on staff has an engineering degree, nor an environmental degree. You have a planning director with a planning background coming on, but you can't expect him to be able to dive into the engineering aspect. So if specialized studies are required by the county to determine whether or not this facility best meets the criteria of the county, you can, you know, work with the applicant on a negotiated basis to seek those studies and have them pay for those studies. As I noted, small scale solar facilities are exempted from a large number of the requirements. There is a requirement, they have a site plan and a narrative, and they also address the decommissioning of that facility. And that is when it goes offline, you've got to be able to, you know, have a way to take down. You can't just walk away from it, leave it in the county. You've got to have a decommissioning process. So they are dealing with that, as well as other zoning regulations relative to signage, noise, and lighting, fencing, setback, vegetative buffering, and as I said, decommissioning. It does establish new setback criteria for large scale solar and battery energy storage facilities. Currently, right now, it's proposed that 100 feet from the proposed right of way, that would be a street or private road, 300 feet from habitable dwellings, and 100 feet from adjoining property lines. That's what's proposed. Currently, you range in your zoning ordinance anywhere from 30 feet as a setback as a minimum, excuse me, 20 feet, which is an industrial limited district, to 100 feet as a maximum in your A1, in your A1 district. And that's the only district that has a 100 foot setback is the A1. So this makes it uniform across the zoning districts. It establishes a 50 foot buffer inside the required setback area consisting of existing vegetation and additional, and additional planning if requires, if required. And it requires that that landscape and screening plan, which meets established standards, be provided as part of the application process. There are some discussions about that. That 50 foot buffer falls within that 100, within that particular setback. You're not adding to that. So if you've got 100 foot setback requirement, you've got to have 50 foot of separation of some type of landscaping. And that can be natural vegetation. And in Notaway County, you've got a lot of forested land, and if there is a tree line there, that should be incorporated into the, into the buffer and in the vegetative planting as opposed to cut down all the trees and replanting trees that maybe last 15, 20 years like Leyland cypress, which I know from my past experience in the yard. And we do require, we do require that the buffer shall consist of existing vegetation with an installed strip if necessary. So existing vegetation with an installed strip if necessary. So it's inherent upon the developer of the site to take advantage of what's there because that cuts down their costs. So you've got to think through that. And this, the buffer can be waived by the Board of Supervisors if requested by the Planning Commission if existing wetlands are, and woodlands are used. For example, on the backside of a site, you got 200 feet of wetlands. Well, you don't have to put in another 100 foot buffer, you just incorporate that into it. Moving on to the next page. This is different than what we currently do. What we currently do is What we currently do is, most counties did this, received the application, you review the application, and schedule a public hearing at the planning commission level, schedule a planning commission, uh, public hearing at the board supervisors level. There are requirements now that the county can take advantage of that allows the developer, requires the developer or the applicant for a large-scale solar or battery energy storage facility to sponsor a community meeting. And it's sponsored by them. And they are to provide the results and the information gained from that meeting to the planning commission and the board of supervisors. So you can factor that into your decision-making process. And this, again, is very different, and I think is very beneficial. We have expanded the decommissioning language, and we've required a decommissioning plan for all solar-related facilities, which is updated every five years at the owner's expense. And as that update occurs, as the expense goes up, that has to be considered. And that factors into the financial security, which the county accepts at the beginning, to decommission the plant. And you can accept a cash escrow, performance security bond, certified check, or a replicable letter of credit or other form of credit deemed acceptable to the county. But you have to have enough. Should that facility go, be, go out of business, the owner go out of business, you've got to have the resource to be able to go in and make that product, that land whole again. So that's why you have the decommissioning plan and the security. It does, the proposed ordinance does expand requirements for coordination with emergency management as well as traffic coordination during construction and traffic analysis that needs to take place. There is requirements of groundwater impacts for large-scale solar and battery energy storage facilities, and that's spread through various sections of the ordinance. The next page, dealing with key changes and provisions to redraft the works. The county does, can't require, we actually have the option to request additional information as part of the application process to be submitted related to impacts upon prime farmlands, forested areas, property values, historic resources, traffic again during and post-construction. And I think particularly important here to any rural community is the fact that you can consider the impacts upon prime farmlands and forested lands. And Susan has mentioned this, and we'll have further comment on this. But there seems like rural areas are taking the brunt of the large-scale solar facilities, which means that farmland's coming out of production, forested land is being harvested and not being replanted, which is kind of a contradiction to all the green energy stuff because we've got solar, which is not using petroleum products to generate electricity or coal. That's good. But on the other hand, you're taking away agricultural land. You may be taking away agricultural land and forested land, which has a vital part in keeping the atmosphere clean. So we do have some, we can ask about additional information for that. And it can be a determining factor by the planning commission making a recommendation or the board supervisors making a decision as to whether or not that project is a go. If it's on, you know, more than ten percent, fifteen percent prime farmland, they may need to reorient the project, or maybe it doesn't get approved. And then we do establish minimum standards for battery energy storage facilities to aid emergency service providers. As I've noted, we've received letters, and you have copies of the letters that we received from Soli UNESCO and Dominion Energy. We received those yesterday. So, and we had a deep dive into, you know, what their suggestions are. We had conversations, Susan and I had a conversation today. I reviewed them, she's reviewed them. And a lot of comments make sense. Of course, I think they're constructive. I think the one concern I have is about the density provision. And that may be something which we can address, but I'd ask Susan to address that as well. So on the last slide of my presentation, direction concerning proposed ordinance, steps. You have three options. Draft ordinance, if everything's okay, you're already right. So let's go to joint public hearing. If we, if the planning commission wants to make recommendations to the board that minor modifications take place, and the board accepts those, if there's time to do that, you can, we can make, the staff can make those changes based upon the comments and questions, send them back out to everybody, and you might be able to schedule a joint public hearing in January. Or you may want to take a more deliberate step, absorb what you've heard this evening, and consider it, and think about what you really think the changes may need to be in the draft ordinance, if any. So with that, I would say that going back to Soli UNESCO and Dominion, a number of their comments overlap and sense to us. We can go into those if you'd like at a later time this evening. But with that, I'd like to ask Susan to step up and offer some comments on where the county is, what she sees, what her thoughts are in regard to the Soli UNESCO and Dominion comments. So, Susan?
Thank you, John, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. You know, this is something that we've been dealing with in Sussex for, I guess we approved our first project, my first year on the board, in 2015, began construction 2016, went online in 2017. That was a, that is a two-hundred-acre, twenty-megawatt solar facility outside of Stony Creek that is now owned by Dominion. It has a PPA power purchase agreement with Facebook, I'm sorry, Amazon. We then were hit with a request for a twenty-five-hundred-acre, trying to remember the megawatts on that one. It was, it was in excess of a hundred and twenty megawatts. That project, we approved, I think, fairly grudgingly. And that is when it hit me like a freight train that we really needed to get up to speed on a solar ordinance because we approved that without any zoning or comp plan language to protect us. We were afraid if we didn't, we might end up in court and have nothing to stand on. So after that project, we got into high gear and really decided we needed to kind of wrestle this, this bear. We sensed that, we have approved one more project, another large project for the co-ops that is near, if you know where Sussex One and Two State Prison and the landfill are on 460. We approved that project in September of, what year are we in, twenty? September of 21. And that project is really beneficial. I'm very excited about that project because it was approved under the new revenue options given to us by the General Assembly. So that project, in addition to being in a physically great location, we were able to take advantage of the host agreement legislation, and we got a $10 million host agreement as part of that project for the county with 4.2 million go into broadband, dedicated purely for that. So, so, you know, we're not talking about the revenue options tonight, but, but that project is a win-win for everybody for a number of reasons. We've got a few others, you know, in the queue, like everybody does. And, and we're in the process of updating our, tinkering with our zoning a little bit. So I want to then go, go through some of your changes. And John and the planning commission, these gentlemen have been great to work with. We've had some really productive meetings. So one of the issues that John and I talked about, and he wanted me to address for you all, was, I think, something that's getting a little bit of chatter, and that's the, the distance from the town. Now, I can tell you, in Sussex County, we won't let them any closer than three miles to town. And, and so, having lived through a number of these, I like to have a real-life story to go with why something may or may not be good. So the, the project that really got us going down the zoning path, the very large twenty-five-hundred-acre one, that literally, if you're familiar with Route 40, if you drive from Stony Creek into Waverly, that project literally touches the town boundary. They have clear-cut everything. And so as you approach Waverly, all you're going to see on the right side is going to be a sea of solar panels. Our vegetative buffer that was naturally there has been lost. There is not going to be any way to hide this behemoth. And we are going to have people living in town that this is going to be their view shed. And, and we've all got a lot of buyer's remorse over this project. But again, we didn't have zoning in place to cover us. So after that experience, we, we decided that, that in our opinion, and, and everybody's geography is different, and that's what makes this, we learn from each other, but it's a very individual decision based on your county, your residents, your geography, your, your layout. But we went with a three-mile boundary from all of our towns. And as John referenced, if you ever need to expand, if you ever have a business that wants to come to town and actually employ people, you know, you want to have that, that, you know, footprint available and not have solar panels, you know, up in your face. So, you know, some people may think one mile is too severe, but again, you know, in our case, we went with three. So, you know, the, the thought process that we, we went through in Sussex is, you know, the towns are where a lot of concentration of folks live. And I think y'all don't have any of these in operation, but if, if you've not toured any, I really encourage you to go look at them. But there are view shed issues, and so, that I think you need to consider for your citizens. So that's one. I, I can just tell you, I've, I've got a lot of regret over the one that's kissing our town limit. So I, you know, again, just, just our experience, not telling y'all what to do. But, and I invite you, if you want to come and look at it in Sussex, I'll be happy to take you. But, so that, that is one thing that I would give some thought to. And on the, on the view shed issue, you know, John referenced, you know, all the trees getting cut down. And, and this is something that we're talking with developers as they come to our county. What is happening is developers will go to a landowner, and they will say, "We want to put this solar project in here. Don't worry about it. We'll get it through the planning commission. We'll get it through the board. Cut all the timber." Well, what you've done is you have taken away any natural vegetative buffer of mature trees, which John and I were left. And you can't plant enough Leyland cypress to duplicate it. I don't care if they're eight feet tall. You can't, you can't do it. So we're getting a lot of what I call anticipatory cutting. And, you know, what we do in Sussex, we have developers, before they even get to the planning commission, we go meet with them, get in the truck, and drive out to the field or the woods and say, "Take me where you think you want to put this thing." And we walk it, and we touch it, and we look at it. And I've had a couple, I'm like, "This dog's never going to hunt." And they've gone on down the road. So, you know, you don't want to get in a position where all the trees are gone, nobody's ever walked this thing, and y'all are sitting up here approving it, and you've never been out to see it. Please, please, don't ever do that. That is a, that's another bad place you don't want to be, I promise you that. So, you know, a lot of proactive research before you go down the process, I think is a very advisable thing to do. So, going on, on the battery storage, I know Dominion, so in addition to having a large project underway and, and a large one under construction, two large ones under construction, we in Sussex have, to my knowledge, we have approved the only freestanding battery storage system in Virginia right now. I know Richmond County has one that's in the application process. Many projects going forward will have battery storage attached to them. There aren't a whole lot, although they're coming of basically battery storage, you know, collectors. Now, they're always going to be adjacent to a substation. That, that's how this is going to work. They're not going to put them in the middle of nowhere unless there's a substation in the middle of nowhere next to it. Basically, these BEST systems, BEST is the nickname, Battery Energy Storage System. What the BEST systems do, they don't hold sunshine from this week that'll be used next week. The BEST battery storage out there is going to hold about six hours of juice. So basically, it's a frequency modulator. And what it does is it, it holds the juice for a few hours, uploads it to the grid at peak hours, and that's what they do. There's a little bit of risk, or, depending on who you ask, a lot of risk associated with battery storage. The incident that John referred to in Arizona, there was a battery storage unit. There was a fire. There had not been adequate, and the industry will admit this, there had not been adequate training and coordination between local emergency services. So instead of letting the fire internal controls put out the fire, firefighters rushed in, opened the door because these things are basically the size of tractor-trailers. They have doors. The batteries are inside these big units. Firefighters opened the doors. Oxygen rushed in. You had, went from a fire to an explosion. Eight firefighters sent to the hospital with, you know, second, third-degree burns. So everybody learned a lot from that experience. So Dominion, the, the facility in Sussex that we, the freestanding unit we have, was developed by East Point Energy. It has been acquired by Dominion. So Dominion now owns the project in our county. We approved the original CUP a few months before last September and had to come back because Dominion updated and changed the fire suppression system to a newer, better, safer fire suppression system that, quite frankly, we have a lot of confidence in. Dominion has been very good to work with on that project. So their suggestions regarding the battery storage, I think, are based a lot of what we did in, on a lot of what we did in Sussex. The other thing they mentioned is the Virginia State Building Code is, as your, there are so many codes out there. There's the National Fire Protection Association set of codes that NFPA does. There are the various electrical accrediting and associations, the electrical codes. But in Virginia, all of that umbrellas under the Uniform Statewide Building Code, and they will pull as, as needed. So they, they made a reference to using the statewide building code. That is also what we came to in Sussex on our battery storage projects. So I, I would certainly concur with their recommendations on that. But, you know, I think the other, other high points, the prime farmland and forest land, you know, that is always my big concern because at our heart, we are ag and forested communities. And, you know, those trees, I told, I told Governor Norlem a couple of years ago. I said, "You know, Governor, those trees have jobs attached to them. We've got consultant foresters, we've got loggers, we've got sawmills." Every, you know, those trees, I think Weldon Cooper attached four-point-something jobs to certain acres of trees. I mean, it's a business for us, so we're, we're losing that. So I think we need to be cautious, which is why siting of these things is so important. It's so important. So what I would recommend, John mentioned prime farmland. A lot of localities, we are going to do it in Sussex in our revision, we're going to reference soil indexing. So I think USDA, Department of Agriculture, they actually index in grade soils, A, B, C, D, you know, really good growing dirt to really crappy growing dirt. And, and so you can get your soil index. And so what we're going to say is if it is, you know, grade A farmland, it's going to be off limits. Because ultimately, we still have to eat, we still have to have, you know, Mr. Jones's cattle. You know, we, we still have to hold on to some of our good dirt. So, you know, that's what a lot of localities are doing, is indexing farmland and putting certain bits of it off limits. The other thing you might recommend, and I've been working with the Department of Forestry... and our state forester on this, but the Department of Forestry has identified what they called, call high-value forests in Virginia. So if you're looking at a project, you might want to consult with your area forester and say, "Hey, for Nottoway County, what do you have? Have you identified any high-value forests?" And they've got it on a GIS layer and they can tell you. So that, that could give you some guidepost of, "Well, this is a good project, but this is off limits. We might need to shift it." You know, so, so you can really start to identify your farm and your forests that are exceptional. And, and I, at least in Sussex, um, we will try to keep those off limits. So, um, let's see, what else? What else do we have in here? Um, the, the proposed setbacks, we discussed that at the last meeting. I always say, when it comes to somebody's house, I have a football field approach. You don't want one of these things any closer than a football field, uh, to someone having to live there. So that, that's where the three hundred yards comes in. Um, but, uh, or three football fields, I guess. Um, and I think some of the other comments from both Sol Yunesco and Dominion had to do with landscaping plans. Um, we, we do not a special exception, but the conditional use permit in Sussex. So, um, typically, um, as part of the CUP, it may be a little premature to have a complete landscaping plan because you don't have your site plan yet. But certainly in the CUP, I would put them on notice, we are gonna require, you know, a landscaping plan. And, and again, I think, I think when it comes to the landscaping piece, the biggest, the biggest thing all of our localities can do is begin the discussions earlier. The unofficial discussions earlier, so we don't have trees taken down that need to stay. Because once they're down, they're down. And so I think identification of parcels and at least having some general idea of where this thing is gonna be. So you know ballpark, okay, this needs to stay, this, um, needs to go or can go, um, I think is a, a very wise thing to do. So, and again, that just takes a little bit of shoe leather and saying, "Hey, I don't wanna see it on paper. We're gonna get in the truck and we're gonna go." And, and I have learned so much on those field trips. Um, and have prevented some, some bad things from happening on these last couple of quarters. So, um, John, have I missed anything? I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions, so.
No, I, Susan, one thing you might address is one of the, one of the questions from Sol Yunesco was definition of project area versus, uh, whether it's the fenced area.
Right, yeah.
Or the entire boundary of the so.
Right, um.
And how does Sussex do that? Because, you know, that makes sense to me. That it should be probably the fenced area.
Yeah, so, so the, the, and it, and it's all treated differently. I mean, that, that's a, that's kind of a loaded thing because what you'll find for taxation purposes, whether it's under panel or is it buffer, and, and it's taxed differently, so, so those things matter. Um, but the project area for us is what's inside the fence. Um, and the buffer is the buffer. Um, but yeah, so I think, I think that's an accurate, um, way to describe it. So you've got, you know, basically your, your fenced in is where the panels, the, the, all of your wiring, your sort of, your transformer, your mini substation, all of that's gonna be inside the fence. And, and that is what's gonna be taxed at the, you know, ten to twelve thousand acre. That is the project area, so.
Okay. Question?
Yeah, I, I, I do have some questions. First of all, uh, John and, um, um, I'm sorry, Sandy?
Susan.
Susan, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Um, I appreciate all the work y'all have done on this. And by the way, thank you for taking the lump so you can share it with others for not making the same mistakes. Um, a couple of the points that you have in it, and of course, y'all addressed several questions that I had here. Now, I wanna know if these items are in the current ordinance as it's written. The soil index to determine the soil quality, the high-value forest, um, the required landscaping piece, and the onsite pre-construction, uh, visit prior to an application request. Is any of that in the current ordinance as it's written?
No, and, and I don't believe so.
The onsite initial visit is not, that's typically a procedural thing, which the county does. Ted started initiating that with applicants before they submit, I believe. Ted, it's a subdivision plan. He requires a, a meeting face-to-face, and that's a procedural thing to post a corporation into the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Azvina. Well, just to clarify, uh, what I have been doing is a more formal process when folks come in for variances, special exceptions, rezonings, amendments, uh, to go over and explain the process to them. We have found that to be already be beneficial in avoiding, uh, cases that really didn't have to go forward, that could be resolved in some other, some other fashion. Um, generally on the subdivisions, um, my experience has been the, the, the surveyors will reach out and ask for a meeting. Uh, we don't have a formal checklist process on that. But we have started a, a formal pre-application process for the zoning request.
The, within the ordinance to address the rest of your question, Mr. Rourke, there is a prime farmland, uh, you can request information on prime farmland. We did not include language in conjunction with high-value forestry land. That might be something that you wanna add.
Absolutely.
Okay. What were your other?
The, um, the required landscaping piece, uh, of course, you address the high, uh, high forestry, and then the, uh, soil index to determine soil quality.
Well, how does that, Susan, how does that relate to prime farmland and product soil?
Well, the, the soil is, is graded from basically high to low. And, um, Crater PDC, and are you?
No.
No, not in Crater. Crater is helping us with our soil index. So, um, you know, a good place to maybe get that help is, is on the soils just to work through the PDC because they can sort of aggregate that information from, you know, federal Department of Agriculture Soil and Water Conservation Districts. And so that's who we're working with to get our indexing finalized. And then on the high-value forest, um, you know, you can, you can put it in the ordinance, but, you know, that, that could be as easy as a phone call to your regional forester because they should have that information.
Uh huh.
Um, just to give you, you know, an idea of, of what land you might wanna stay off of, so.
All right.
You know, that, that could be put in the ordinance or it could be a phone call from, you know, county staff, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go right on.
Susan, John, let me ask you this. Um, you, you referenced the COP plan language and everything, and right now we're going through our COP plan revision. Um, I think the last thing the planning commission looked at was, uh, among the last things, was a very, very detailed soil map for the county. Um, if, I'm just thinking ahead here. A combination of, and John, we've talked about this, power line proximity in good, in, in not-so-great soils for forestry and farming could then be turned into a section on the future land juice plan map of the COP plan.
That would be a solar designated district.
A solar, a solar corridor, if you will. Okay.
Yep, you could, you could flip it the other way and say, you know, we know the good's off limit. Here's the not-so-good and it's within that magic two-mile radius of transmission. Um, and that would be where you would want to direct development, yeah.
Okay.
That was it. Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a, uh, couple of points. The, uh, the, the three hundred feet, when, when y'all were going through that, did you seem to be getting, uh, more feedback from your citizens as whether or not the three hundred was enough? Should it have been four hundred, five hundred?
Um, the, the, the project that escaped us is probably gonna give us some direction on that. Um, because it's all up in their, in their space. Um, we have been fortunate in that the battery storage, the co-op project, um, that project, we, we love those sites and, and the battery project, they're so isolated. Um, we don't have any residents, even, I don't even know what the closest residents would be. In both cases, probably at least a mile. Um, so we haven't tested that yet. Um, but, but I, I think everybody can envision a football field. And so, you know, you think that, that's, I don't want it any closer than that. I, I think, I think a good, another good rule of thumb, because again, we all learn from everybody's mistakes. I'm sure folks have driven in Prince George along Reeves Road. Um, have you seen the one there that is literally in folks' backyards? Um, you know, that, that's a good mental, you know, you, it, it, on paper, it's on paper, but until you can, again, touch it and see it and visualize it. So the Reeves Road one, I think, is a poster child of how not to do, how not to do. I mean, it's, um, and, and that is certainly, uh, less than the three hundred feet. Um, so I, you know, again, is, I, I think that's a good minimum. Um, and I, I think, you know, again, part and parcel with that, three hundred feet isn't gonna be enough. Five hundred feet isn't gonna be enough if you don't have a good vegetative buffer and screening. You know, you're, you're gonna need miles if you don't have that, quite frankly, I think. Um.
I think y'all may have touched on, I was, uh, asking, because we've got local warehouses around here, but that's not an option. They have to be, the storage facilities have to be onsite. Is that correct?
The storage?
The, the battery storage facilities.
Um, some, projects are rolling out with battery storage attached.
Uh huh.
Um, I know that Dominion plans to deploy a number of freestanding battery storage units around substations all across Virginia because they're gonna need to, to hold this as they transition to the ultimate Clean Economy Act requirement. You're gonna have to have dozens, that, and that's probably a very conservative number, dozens of these things dotted around Virginia, um, at, at substations to hold the juice.
Yeah, I was just trying to use the resources that we may have available, like warehousing and stuff like that, as, as options. But, and Mr. Azvina, I believe you touched on the other things. I, I believe as far as homeowners go, they just need an approval from the, uh, building inspector. Uh, because one of my concerns was like the small home solar, solar panels not being overtaxed, discouraging the homeowners from making those upgrades and basically saying, "Okay, well, they're gonna get overtaxed, so why do the improvements?"
Uh, taxation is a separate function.
Right.
Building permit approval. Uh, adding solar panels to your home or your business will increase the value. But it's at a different value than what the real estate is.
And that's what I want the people to hear.
Right, and, and so, you know, it's, if you add a garage to your house, you have nothing to property as well. So it's in, it's in that ballpark. The, the process of application is not over us. Uh, it doesn't fall under the, you know, yet this whole optimization. It's like going through the building permit process, but there would be an increase in value. If I could kind of come back to your concerns about view sheds. If the board and the planning commission wants to take a look at Section four nineteen dash eight, considerations for conditions, uh, do you special exception for that? There is a lot of fact, the, the, the Congress said, uh, the buildability and the impact of the, the areas, things that, 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 those locations.
It's page one twenty-one.
A lot of things, that, these are under the, the staff and management recommendations for the planning commission and the board, uh, and the board and the planning commission. Both consider improving these types of facilities. And they're pretty broad.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the last thing I got is, is that when, while we were at VACO, I attended the Future of Energy. And the spot-on information that we're getting right here, um, one was, uh, part of the Virginia Clean Energy Act, was a piece of legislation that had meandered through the Sausage Factory, what's the General Assembly, and their target date of twenty fifty to be a hundred percent relying on renewable energy. And the speaker noted that it was to move forward at, at a rate of six percent in twenty twenty-one, seven in twenty twenty-two, eight percent in twenty twenty-three, and then jumped to roughly ten percent thereafter. Uh, of course, there was issues with, uh, infrastructure sustain, sustainability and environmentalist. And, uh, you know, the cost for sustainability, whether it's generated or not. For example, like solar and storage capacity that, that they spoke up here, uh, use of windmills and stuff like that. But also there was, um, the, the issues that was gonna impact the local governing bodies and, and councils, which was, uh, would lead to more referendums on issues so evenly split, like what the General Assembly is dealing with now called nimbyisms. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of that, lamest terms, nimby, not in my backyard. So, um, people want reliable energy. They want inexpensive energy. But we want progressive energy, but they don't want to see it or hear it. So a lot of what y'all have addressed here is, and in these reports, is absolutely spot-on to what VACO was putting out and, you know, again, thank y'all.
I'll answer any other questions and, and John and Ted both have my numbers. I, I have horses. I'm up at five thirty, six o'clock in the morning. I go to bed at, you know, eleven o'clock. After about ten thirty, you might not wanna talk to me because I'm getting sleepy. But I'm, I'm always available and they have my cell number, so feel free to call me anytime, but, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we ask the planning commission a few questions?
Yep.
And this would be to whichever you probably know the most about, and I do have a few. One, what do these facilities do to like neighboring property values?
We had said we were not gonna.
I think that depends on what study you look at.
From the planning commission.
So, um.
You know, we could, the county can require as part of the application process an, uh, an economic impact analysis, which could take into account surrounding properties and the impact. I remember when I was working in the private sector, Dominion, uh, was gonna build a solar energy facility up on top of, outside of Tazewell on the road, on the mountain range that runs parallel to Interstate eighty-one. And we were hired to do the so, the impact analysis on the adjoining properties. And what we found, and that was very early in the process of developing wind, uh, that doesn't sound too good. Uh, the fact of the matter is, uh, developing wind. And, uh, we found that there were minimal impacts on surrounding property values because of the buffers that were being required. But that is something that the county could require would be that type of analysis.
Well, and I think, I think that is where, to me, the property value question is really answered when you look at good projects and bad projects. Again, I'm gonna go to the Reeves Road project. I wouldn't buy one of those houses. Here, heretofore, I may have. But it's gonna take a very long time for those poor Leyland Cypress trees they planted to screen what has happened there. And so you've got, I'd say, eight to ten houses that are directly, when you look out the front window or the back window, depending on which side of the road you're on, all you see, all you see is a sea of solar panels. So I would ask, you know, to me, um, that's a very subjective question. And so I would answer your question. If you can see it, it's gonna hurt your value. That's how I'd answer it. So that's where I think all localities have really gotta get a whole lot more proactive before we are mowing down hundreds of acres of trees. We need to know where these things are gonna go. So we can protect the view shed, allow a good project to go forward and not diminish property value.
Well, I see in here where, um, Well, I see in here where those sorts of studies have to be paid for by the owner or operator. Who actually chooses the third-party person? Because a lot of times, those third-party people tend to side with whoever.
In Sussex, we choose, and that's.
County chooses.
Yes, yes.
All right. I do have a few more. You mentioned this thing about having to where you can't have another facility within a certain range of, of an existing one. And I'm guessing that's to prevent it from just being a sea of solar panels, but I don't see where there's like a maximum size recommended for one of these facilities.
No, there is none.
Yeah, you know, that's one of the things we talked about at length with the Planning Commission. Localities do it a whole lot of different ways. Some counties have a minimum, but no maximum. Some have no minimum, but they've got a max. Some counties, like Brunswick, have done a percentage of their land mass. You know, there are all kinds of ways you can, you can skin that cat. In Sussex, we did not go with the density option. We've put a two-mile distance in between projects for that very reason, so we don't have a veritable C. And, and, and we use two miles as our logic, because over a couple miles of transmission, too expensive, they're going to walk away. They're just going to be like, oh, we're not, we're not doing that. So, so we just put a two-mile space in between projects, is how we handled it, but.
Well, with your experience with, with the 2,500 acre one, so, a forest draws a lot more rainwater than open field with these solar panels, are you getting in trouble with downstream flooding?
Well, that one is just being timbered right now, but I will tell you, true story, the 2,500 acre one in Stony Creek, about, within several months of it going live, we had a pretty major rain event. Route 40 was closed, Route 40 was taken down to one lane. The country road on the backside of the project was completely closed, because it flooded. To your point, it generated so much stormwater, they went back in after the fact, put in another retention pond, did additional buring, and that's one thing, I think the developers are awfully skippy on retention ponds, buring, you know, that, that stuff. Look, you can say what you want. What had, you know, herefore been trees that absorb water, or a farm field with crops that absorb water, it is a glass parking lot, folks. I'm sorry, but it is. And it generates an enormous amount of stormwater, and there are projects, there was a big incident with one in Louisa recently. You know, you've, and, and of course, the stormwater piece of it is typically DEQs, per view. DEQ is awfully understaffed on these things. And so, I think that's where, you know, a, a good third-party engineering firm, when it comes to stormwater, I think people need to do their homework on stormwater, because we lived through it in Sussex, Louisa's just had a problem. It, it makes a massive amount of stormwater. They do, they just do.
Anyone else from the Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Anyone else from our board?
I still got a couple.
He's still got a couple questions.
Oh, yes, there, and mainly just probably a bit of Windsorism, terminology and stuff, that, that there's going to be a security planning. What does the security actually entail? Is there a person on site 24/7? Is it just fence, or is it?
That's, well.
Who's talking about financial security?
We're talking about financial security for decommissioning.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, if a facility goes out of business, you're going to set aside a sub-form, which is acceptable to the county. It can be cash, it can be a bond, it can be a letter of credit, or other things acceptable to the county, so they can draw that down. From a security standpoint of the facility overall, there's a six-foot fence at minimum with barbed wire on top of it, which is something which, you know, is going to be there, because the, the facility needs to, the owner of that facility needs to protect those panels. You don't want anybody just going in there running around throwing rocks on them and stuff like that.
And the other word that I raised, the fire of all enforcement and traffic itself, what does that really entail?
That's where we're going to be taking a look at what the impacts are, and what the capabilities are of the facility, proposed facility, on those services, and whether or not those, you know, what needs to be done to be able to prop them up, to ensure that they can respond, or to have a plan in place so that they know exactly what they're coming into, should a call come out for that facility.
We need to call them.
They kind of would be.
We need to call them.
Yes, that, we have that in our, in our CUP, yes.
Yes, yes.
And that's particularly important for battery storage. For battery storage, we actually have, the Coalition has developed about 200 recommended conditions. We require them in Sussex to train our firefighters yearly, any, any foams or any special firefighting materials they buy and pay for, any changes in equipment, it is on them to train our firefighters. So, so we have a lot of language in our CUP on that.
And the last one I kind of have here is, how flexible of a document is this? This is a technology field that's just rapidly changing every day. So, they come out with some new sort of energy manufacturing that harnesses the sun, does it still get caught under this, or?
This is dealing with, okay, this is dealing with solar, and solar is the, is defined as the panels, although, but both panels. We're not dealing with new alternative forms of capturing the sun in any way, shape, or form.
So, that, you know, the technology that used mirrors and all that focus.
And I know what you're talking, out west, they've got those, they're called concentration towers, that they have, those are the ones that if you go on Google, you'll watch the poor birds fly over it, and they burst into flame, because it is so hot. They literally fly, and they, I've, I've already talked to the State Corporation Commission about those, and they are fully aware of concentration towers, and I think they would be very negatively perceived. And, and the way I understand, certainly our ordinance in Sussex, they wouldn't address a concentration tower. I would, I would personally not approve anything like that.
And they're not permitted, they're not permitted use under the zoning order, I see that's one.
Yeah.
Okay. But we could add that as a specific prohibition in this, in this draft?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that, that technology is getting a whole lot of bad press.
I think you'd want to.
Anyone else?
Just go right on.
Susan, are you familiar with the lawsuit against, I think, is it Frederick County?
Frederick County, Maryland, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what brought that on?
I don't know what the status of that one is, but, but for those that, that aren't aware, basically, Frederick County Board of Supervisors approved a project, turned around, and didn't approve another project, and I think the applicant saw it as an arbitrary precious decision, not one based on a land use reason. And so, again, you've really got to make sure, if you say no, there's a good reason. I, I can give you an example. In Sussex, we just denied a 1.6 megawatt, tiny little 30-acre project. We denied it because it's a landlocked parcel, the only access is off Highway 40. It is such a narrow entrance, there was no way to do a floating entrance for all the construction trucks to, to build this project, and the only road in was in between two brick homes, lived in by retired people, and the road was 25 feet off the gentleman's garage. And I said, you have got, over my dead body, you have got to be kidding me. And, and so, I said, take me to court, I'll stand by that land use decision all day long, but you better make sure you've got a good land use decision for, for saying no. And so, I think that's why your zoning is important. You know, you can really say, I am protecting this farmland because of blank, I am protecting this forest because of blank. This entrance is unsuitable, it's in between two people's residences. You know, you, you wouldn't really want to make sure you've written good enough zoning that gives you a hook, and, and if you make a land use decision, you know, it'll hold up. And I think in Frederick's case, that kind of supporting decision, you know, wasn't there. So, I think the applicant said, well, I'm going to have my day in court, so.
So, should there be a maximum size limitation incorporated into this ordinance?
You know, it, it's interesting, in Sussex, we, after the 2,500 acre nightmare, we got a little scared and kept them at 1,500 acres. As we're revising our ordinance, I think what we're, the direction we're headed is we're going to put a minimum, but no maximum. And I'll tell you the, the change in our thought process, because of the revenue tools given to us by the General Assembly, if somebody came to me and said, I want to put one on 4,000 acres, well, there are a couple places in the county, we might be able to do that. And if I got $10 million on 75 megawatts, I'm thinking on, you know, 500, 600 megawatts, it's going to be an awfully big host agreement. So, I'm very motivated about good project, good site, what the county can extract for that. So, we're kind of thinking that we're going to maybe not top out the size, but do a minimum. I want to do a minimum. To us, a lot, there are some counties that love these small, less than 5 megawatt projects, love them. The way I look at that, that's another set of buffers, that's another set of view shed problems, that's another set of citizens that are going to be impacted. I'd rather deal with one perimeter on 4,000 acres than 20 perimeters on five or 10 acres, that are going to get us nothing financially, and potentially, you know, you're hunting down those rabbits in 40 years, you're playing whack-a-mole, you know, shutting these things down. So, we've done a minimum of 100 acres, because I'm so concerned about the land fragmentation and these, these tiny little projects dotted around that, that get us nothing. So, that's, but again, everybody's different. Everybody's different, and that's where y'all sitting up there, having a fun job of trying to make this decision, but.
I'd like to, do you have anything?
One more. What constitutes the project? Is that a continuous project, or is that in one parcel, one owner? So, get three or four landowners working together?
Sure. We've had, we've had multiple, you know, there are projects that have multiple landowners, there are projects that have one or two landowners. I think from the developer's perspective, the less landowners they have to deal with, the better. From sort of, I think, the planner's job at the county, the less landowners we have to deal with, the better. But they will do whatever they have to do to aggregate the footprint they need, to get the panel coverage they need, to generate the juice they need. So, they get creative, and, and that's not a bad thing, potentially. It can also be a nightmare, potentially, so, but there's no limit to how many landowners you could have.
I would like to thank the Planning Commission, John and Susan. It's been a lot of work involved in, in getting this document where it is at this point. For those of you who wanted to speak, and we, it's been limited to the Planning Commission and our board, before this can be fulfilled, we have to have a public hearing. So, we will have a public hearing to give everyone, we've got a chance to speak at that time. Will you?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just two quick items.
Yes.
One, just for everyone's knowledge and awareness, we had a technical glitch this evening, and the meeting's been audio-recorded, but was not livestreamed, and there's no video.
We have a video, but it's not livestreamed.
It's not livestreamed, okay. So, there is the, if anybody wants to go back and, and see this or hear this, we can, we can accommodate that. But we apologize for the technical glitch. I think the, the last time we had something like this was the night I was announced, but that's okay. And then also, Mr. Anzavino referenced the start date for the new planning director. Unfortunately, we're going to have to push that start date back. The gentleman's moving in from out of state, and would like to do one move, and he is absolutely committed to live in Notaway County. So, we're trying to help him find some housing in Notaway County, but we're having to adjust that start date, and I'll be making a more formal announcement next week about who it is. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perry, will you adjourn?
Yes, before I adjourn, I certainly would like to thank the supervisors for allowing Mr. John Sutcliffe to take place. I think it's going to learn an experience for all of us. Certainly, by mistake, or by accident, I was, my wife and I, we was on our way down to North Carolina, and we happened to ride down 40 to get on 95. And lo and behold, we ran up on this solar, but first thing my wife said, what in the world is that? I said, I don't know. But then I looked, and saw all these panels, I said, that's what Notaway County, that's what we're discussing there, and.
That was the one, Stony Creek, yeah.
Right, that thing comes almost up to 40.
It does, and, and that was also.
No fence or nothing.
That was also done before our zoning was in place. So, so, again, that's a live and breathing example of why you do this and you do it right, because you don't, you know, I always tell people, if, if people can benefit from our mistakes, then we don't have to. So, it wasn't a loss.
Thank you all, and the planning commission's meeting will be adjourned.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Go ahead.
So moved.
It's been moved and suggested that we adjourn. Of course, though, those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign. Thank you all for coming.